I'd like to call this meeting to order. Go call please, Dana.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Mrs. Brockman?
Here.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Here.
Mr. Canwischer?
Here.
Mrs. Kunkel?
Here.
Dr. Wogle?
Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Belief.
I pledge my allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
After the beloved agenda, are there any questions regarding this evening's agenda? If not, I'd like to take the motion.
I move the board approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Alright, motion by a Canwischer and second by Mrs. Kunkel to approve the agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Vision statement: It is the vision of the Pleasant Valley Community School District to provide the finest academic and extracurricular activities and programs in the state. Not in some things, but in everything, and not for some students, but for every student. Communications concerns and constructive ideas for the district. I'd like to welcome all our guests this evening. I'm standing in for Dr. Wogle, who could not be here this evening, so bear with me. If you would like to address the board on a non-agenda item, now would be the time to do that. Alright, and I'd ask you just please come to the podium, state your name and your affiliation to the district. You will have three minutes to share your thoughts, and because it's not an agenda item, we can only listen and will not comment.
Hi, I'm Lisa Lammers. I teach 4th grade at Riverdale Heights, and I'm also co-president of Pleasant Valley Education Association. I just wanted to bring up two things. One, I had the opportunity last week to be part of the Scholarship Program Night, one of the two Scholarship Program Nights, and I thought it was really amazing how many former staff members and community members are willing to give $1,000 annually to our high school seniors. I thought it showed just the amount of community there is in PV to help these kids as they graduate. And second, it's School Board Appreciation Month, and so on behalf of the teachers, thank you guys for all that you do. You obviously aren't in this for the money or the fame, and you've had a really rough couple of years trying to lead through COVID and everything, but on behalf of the teachers, we really appreciate all the support that you've given to us, so thank you.
Anyone else? Alright, moving on to board members, Mrs. Kunkel.
Nothing from me, thank you.
Mr. Canwischer?
This afternoon, I attended the final presentation of the Computer Science Academy. It's a collaboration between Pleasant Valley School District Bentendorf and John Deere, where the students actually work with professionals in the IT space and develop mobile applications. I was really impressed with what they came out. There were 12, 11 PV students that gave presentations. And the part that was most interesting to me was, I think it'd be the IT stuff, since I'm an IT guy, but it was actually their learning of agile practices, which is a way of doing work within your own teams, and it's extremely popular in IT, it's growing in business. So I was really pleased to see those teams and those students getting some real-life exposure through it. It's the stuff we use every day at work.
Thank you. Mrs. Anderson?
I have nothing.
Mr. Ayers?
I have nothing, thank you.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Nothing from me, thanks.
I do have a recognition, but maybe you'll...
Mr. Klinge Smith?
I have nothing.
Okay, Mr. Zimmer?
I'm after her.
Okay. Mrs. Damon? Mr. Struse?
I will go after Mr. Zimmer, please.
Okay. You guys can decide over who goes first.
Alright, well, I am very pleased to introduce our community partners from Leclerc American Legion, Robert Brockhaus, Mrs. Bob, and Carl. I see Carl in the back here. We are so grateful for the partnership that we have with the American Legion at Pleasant Valley. We host a contest for our 5th graders to write a flag essay each fall. The children write an essay, "What does the American flag mean to me?", and then students, very kind people, read all of these essays, 450-plus essays, and one is selected from each building to be read at the flag ceremony, which we hosted last week and the prior week at each of our elementary buildings. The American Legion comes to each of these meetings. Also, at each building, oftentimes, the children suggest to their friends, their family, their grandpas, their grandmas, their parents, who are current military or retired military, to come to the ceremony, and they're recognized there as well. And it is such a sweet, meaningful time. So, Mr. Brockhaus is here, I'm gonna turn it over to him. We have the pleasure to meet six of these essayists tonight, and the overall essay winner is going to read for us.
Thank you. I would like to add that over the years, the Legion has had 8,000 to 9,000 5th grade students participate in this essay contest, so that's something we can all be proud of. The first person I would like to recognize is Lexi Tane. Lexi? There, Lexi. Introduce your teacher, your principal, and your parents.
My teacher is Ms. Larson.
Where's Ms. Larson? Come on, Ms. Larson.
My mom is right there.
And who's your principal?
Uh, Mr. Hyatt.
Thank you, Lexi. Student, I'd like to introduce Sarah Foia from Cody. Come up here, Sarah. Introduce your teacher, your principal, your parents.
So, my teacher is Mrs. Duncan.
Where's Mrs. Duncan? Where is she? Oh, she's home, okay. And your principal?
And my principal is Mrs. Brashy.
Is she here? She's home, okay.
And then, my parents are, I was really gonna have to look at that.
And where are they?
My mom is here today.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next student, I'd like to introduce Ishan Nanywar from Hopewell. Okay, Ishan, I know you know how to speak, but you did it beautifully.
My teacher is Ms. Moiser.
Where is she?
I don't think she's here.
She's home, okay, your principal?
My principal is Mr. Uncle, which I don't think is there either.
Okay.
And then my two wonderful parents.
Where are your wonderful parents? Come up here. The next individual who came in first at Pleasant View is Julia Willett. Julia?
My teacher is Ms. Hafner.
Where's your teacher?
My principal is Mr. Cotton.
Come on, Mr. Cotton, you can stand up. Thank you. Thank you for being... Okay, Riverdale Heights, Brexah Dahal. Okay, do your duty, Brexah.
My teacher is Mrs. Steeson.
Come on, stand up, teacher. Credit where credit's due, right? And your principal?
My principal is Mrs. Richardson.
Come on, Jeffrey. And your mom and dad?
My mom and dad are right there.
Come on, you guys! Thank you. And the overall individual that was selected to read, this is her essay, with all student body and the Board of Education, is Matthew Dela Cruz from Forest Grove. Now, Matthew, introduce your teacher.
My teacher is Mrs. Nielsen.
Thank you. Principal?
My principal is Mr. Welch. And my dad is Norman.
Thank you for being here.
Brockhaus, Matthew's mother's not here because she's in active duty. Do you want to say a little bit about your mom?
She's studying right now, I'm pretty sure she's...I don't know what she's studying, but I heard that it's a very hard course for her, so she's gonna be really busy for the next...
We had the opportunity, Mr. Welch livestreamed her into the Flag Day Ceremony that we had at Forest Grove, which was really wonderful. So she could participate that way.
Yeah. What the flag means to me. When I look at the flag, I think about America. I think about freedom, and how freedom was not easy to achieve. The cost of freedom is very high. It requires sacrifice, losing your voice, responsibility, courage, and resilience. So many people sacrificed their lives to achieve the freedom we have today. Lots of families happened, torn apart to get freedom. People had to use their voice by taking action and fighting for our freedom. People led and died for this country to keep our freedom. Contrary to doing whatever one wants, freedom means being responsible and following laws. A personal connection to responsibility is when I go out with my friends and follow curfew. It also means having the courage when it matters the most, like when our forefathers fought against Britain, one of the most organized armies at that time. They fought against taxation without representation, speaking up against the king. Even though they were scared, they gathered enough courage to fight for equality, freedom, and what was right. People had to be resilient enough to keep on fighting, keep on marching. Another example of resilience is when I'm down a lot in a basketball game and don't give up. I'm able to come back and keep my head up high, no matter if it's a win or a loss. When I look at the flag, I always try to make sure I don't take this freedom for granted. Freedom is achieved by daily acts of responsibility, using your voice, courage, and resilience. Freedom entails persistence and commitment. Thank you.
Each of the students who was selected to read their essay received a plaque from the American Legion. In addition to that plaque, I want to present... I want to present Matthew with his American flag. Deep gratitude, Matthew.
Thank you.
Now, and I want you to help me present this flag to Mr. Struse, come on. Can you take this? Ryan, we're very honored to give you this flag.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
As Dr. Lewis mentioned, this is one of the most proud moments we have in our school at times. When you look at all the kids and the essays they write, they are phenomenal, and what they put together, and how they share what the flag means to them. And this would not go unnoticed, and it's, we appreciate it so much for the work that the Legion does every single year for us. You know, it's not just at this ceremony, it's the Memorial Day service that we have at Bridgeview, it's the homecoming parade that we have that they're always there. Every football game we have, they raise the flag for us. They are people in our community every single day. Thank you for what you do. You know, tonight is the last time that Mr. Brockhaus will be giving this presentation to us, as he is resigning his duties to somebody else next year. But he has been a stalwart to us in this program from the beginning to the end, and it's been in his family, because his brother was doing it prior to him. So because of them, but tonight, I want to take a moment to say thank you, Robert, for all you've done for the district. And the certificate reads, "For 20 years of dedication to education, Pleasant Valley Community School District, students of the American Legion Buffalo Build Post 247, What the Flag Means to Me Essay Competition Annual Flag Ceremonies that Teach Students Patriotism, Citizenship, and Respect." It is my greatest honor to hand this to you for all you've done for our kids.
The 5th grade teachers, would you stay standing? 5th grade teachers? I also want to thank you, because the 5th graders in their Iowa Social Studies lessons are learning this year about Revolutionary War and about federal documents, and about, right now, they're talking a little bit about Civil War. And these teachers do such a marvelous job of pulling all of this together for children and supporting this work. Every year, you just do outstanding work in helping these kids write these amazing essays. Thank you to you as well.
Last thing, I would like to give one minute. Jeff has best put a video together here for you, Bob. And Mr. Brockhaus is a true Spartan in and out. His children have gone through our district, and his wife was actually a former teacher for us as well, so...
And Brian, she's in the back room.
Carolyn, are you back there? Carol? Carol, can you please stand as well? We know behind him...
Thank you. And Mr. Brockhaus, we're gonna miss you in this capacity, but we'll get to see your great image in our high school for years to come. If any of you recognize him, he is the gentleman pictured on our wall saluting our veterans at our high school. And it's a, it's a very cool picture, so we're very happy to have someone like you representing that wall for us.
Thank you very much.
Alright, and then, moving on. Mr. Zimmer? Your turn.
Just to add, the Legion also leads our graduates in their graduation ceremony, so not done quite yet. Tonight, we've got a number of recognitions. I'd like to start, last board meeting, we recognized our music department for the individual music competition, and tonight, I have listed in front of you the large group competition for both, for all three vocal music, band, and orchestra. And again, they did an outstanding job with Division Ones throughout a number of the ensembles listed in front of you. So, again, the bass choir, trombone choir, and the chamber choir, again, unanimous Division Ones, and the wind symphony in band. That was a tough judging this year. They only gave two Division Ones out of all of the performances there, and then orchestra had Division One also. Next, we've got kind of a cacophony of different items here, so I'd like the advisor, Mr. Jake Reidenauer, as he's coming forward, talk a little bit about Future Problem Solvers. So as he's getting the attendees up front here, I'm gonna talk a little bit about where they're going to be off to and what they're doing. So, Future Problem Solving is an annual competition that challenges students to be creative, communicate well, and think critically. Through the use of a six-step problem-solving process, students identify problems, create solutions, evaluate their solutions, and create an action plan surrounding a hypothetical future situation. Over the past two years, this team of students has learned the process and developed the skills necessary to progress through regional and state competitions to make it to the international competition. Last year, competitions were all virtual. However, this year, the freshman team competed against 23 other teams at regional and 16 teams at the state level to come in second and earn an invitation to the University of Massachusetts to compete against teams from across the world in June. So, Mr. Reidenauer, why don't you introduce the members that are here, and what's facing them in June?
Absolutely. So, we have with us Bennett Title. I don't know if you'd like to introduce your parents as well.
Hi. Yeah, my parents are Justin and Christine over there.
And Kaylee McCaw?
My mom is Darcy McCaw, right there.
Yeah, and so they are headed off to the University of Massachusetts here at the beginning of June, in just a few short weeks, like Mr. Zimmer said, to compete against, I believe, 100 other teams of four. They are joined by freshmen Addie Judd and Cassie Garner as well, who could not make it tonight. But they will go out there and they're presented with what is called a future scene. That future scene, this time around, is based around the concept of antibiotic resistance. That's all we really know about it. We have some research that they can do, and they've started doing into that topic to kind of get them ready for that, that future scene, but they will read through that, and then they will go through that six-step process, where they identify some problems, and then, and identify an underlying problem and come up with solutions for it. Like, like Mr. Zimmer said, they made it last year to internationals. We had to compete virtually. We all gathered at the junior high, as these guys were 8th graders, and they sat in the classroom one evening and did that work, and so this will be a drastically different experience than that. They get to go out there for five days, interact with other students, doing the same kind of things that they are, and yeah, it should be a really, really great opportunity for them. Last year, I believe we came in 17th at internationals, which, not bad for our first year going into this, so we're hoping for better than that this year. I'm sure that they're, they're up to it. I do just want to take a moment as well to thank Mr. Justin Title, who introduced this program to me at the beginning of last year and has been an advocate of it. He also took the students to state this year while I was on paternity leave, so I thank him for that. I'm also thankful for Mrs. Melissa Judd, who is Addie's mom, who will be going with them out to UMass this summer, as well as Mr. Jamie Humm, who is going to be our district advisor out there for them. So, I am continually impressed with these students, they're part of our ELP program at the secondary level. We strive in ELP to challenge kids to be creative and to communicate well and to work as a team, to collaborate, and that's, that's really all woven very well into this, this competition, and so it's exciting to see them grow and develop those skills. This is their last year competing in the junior division, so next year, they'll be in the senior division, so they'll be up against kids that have been doing this for 12 years, where they're, they're just kind of getting into it. But, yeah, like I said, I really look forward to seeing where they go from here on out with the competitions, so thank you, board, for some time to recognize these awesome students.
Before the two of you leave, what are you most excited for in this opportunity in front of you?
I can start, I guess. I'm really excited to just get out and get some more competition. We've been competing against the teams in state for two years now. We kind of know what they've got, we want to see, we kind of want to branch out, we want to see what other teams from across the nation, from across the world have got, and we want to see what they have to offer.
We had a great experience last year, and this is a very different experience, obviously, because last year was virtual in the junior high, in a weird time of night, but now we get to go out to a place that I haven't been before, and we all get to experience people who are in a similar situation as us, and I think it's just gonna be really fun to experience the people and also in a new environment from what we're used to.
On behalf of the district, we want to wish you the very best. Just enjoy the opportunity, whatever the outcome is. Do the best you possibly can, and come back and let us know. And Mr. Title, I do want to say thank you, also you, for your commitment to this over the last few years, to make us understand how good this can be for our kids, so thank you for doing that, and Jake, thanks for all your help too.
Absolutely.
Congratulations.
Congrats.
Continuing on a national level, our math club participated in the Mathematics Association of America, the MAA, annually sponsors five grade-level American mathematics competitions, exams, 8, 10A, 10B, 12A, and 12B, that's these competitions. Within these competition levels, awards and certificates are provided for young women in mathematics across all 50 states or regions. Tonight, the Jane Street Award was earned, which is dealing with quantitative, Jane Street is a quantitative trading firm, which funds five awards and 150 certificates supporting the AMC 12A exam results. Five Iowa Certificate of Excellent awards were given in the state of Iowa, with Pleasant Valley High School earning two of these. Congratulations to Pleasant Valley High School seniors Emmy Peterson and Kavya Kalatur. Kavya, I know is here, and we'll be bringing her up in just a moment. Kavia, I know is here, and we'll be bringing her up in just a moment. The Akami, which is a global content delivery network of cybersecurity and cloud service company, also supports five awards and 150 certificates for the AMC 12B exam. Seven Certificates of Excellence awards were given in the state of Iowa with Pleasant Valley High School earning two of these. Congratulations to Pleasant Valley High School senior Kavia Kalatour and junior Sabini Iyer. So we'll recognize Kavia in just a moment. At this time, I saw Yanis. Yanis, are you gonna be willing to come up representing your team for the cybersecurity? Will you come up for that? And is there another of your teammates here? Well, thank you. The advisor was not able to be here, so I'm gonna give this to you, and then I'm gonna read the explanation of this. And I'm gonna let you guys take it from there. Okay, so it's always fun the first time you go out to a competition and you're not sure what you're gonna face. But the state of Iowa, Iowa State University's Center for Cybersecurity and Innovation and Outreach sponsors a competition, the IT Olympics Cyber Defense State Champions are before you. So the first time they go out, the team of Jackson Tegmeyer, Braxton Dar, there's a ringer, and Yanis Golsowhisky beat the reigning champions by over 70 points. Now we have the tech trophy to add to the trophy case. Yanis, you want to talk, and Braxton, you want to talk a little bit about how this happened, that you go out for the very first time and come back with a state championship?
I think we're just real programmers at heart. Every Wednesday, we went through the trials and tribulations after class and got prepared by an Iowa State cybersecurity major. We would talk with them over a Google Meet call. And yeah, every week, we would dedicate a period to training for this and also outside of school.
Yeah, it was pretty easy. It really wasn't that difficult, but there was a lot. We got a scenario document and explained, like, you get a bunch of servers, and then there's a bunch of vulnerabilities that they place inside of it. And then you go through and find out what they did. And it only took, like, a week, but that was it. And then we went and sat there and did the, like, there was, like, you know, missions you had to do during the whole thing to distract you, but it didn't matter because ours was all secure, and we knew it was secure, so we didn't have to worry about it. So we were just focused on doing the missions, and that's how we placed first, guaranteed.
So can I ask what year you two gentlemen are? And where are you going career-wise, if you know at this point?
I'm a senior, and I'm probably going to computer science or cybersecurity at Iowa State.
I'm a junior, and I'm probably going to Iowa State for cybersecurity or computer science related, so.
Work in that field professionally and use all the help we can. Thanks for crushing the competition.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Well done, gentlemen.
Okay, now, the state of Iowa awards three presidential scholarships. Three high school students have been named to the 58th Class of U.S. Presidential Scholars. The program recognizes up to 161 high school seniors from across the country for their accomplishments in academics, arts, and career in technology education fields. Iowa's U.S. Presidential Scholars this year are Maxwell, Maxwell Ayueas from Chertan High School, Jonathan Chen from West High School, and Kavia Kalatour from Pleasant Valley Community School District. Kavia, if you and your parents want to come up in a moment, finish reading the rest of this. Again, this is from the state of Iowa. Congratulations to Maxwell, Jonathan, and Kavia on achieving this extraordinary recognition, which is one of the nation's highest honors for high school students, the Iowa Department of Education Director Ann Lebo. I am proud to join the family and friends and school communities of each of our scholars in congratulating them on their accomplishments, and I look forward to their continued success in college post-secondary career training in the workforce. Jonathan Chen and Kavia Kalatour were recognized for their academic success, and Maxwell was honored for his outstanding ability in CTE. Students are selected based on their academic achievement, artistic, and technical excellence, essays, school evaluation and transcript, as well as evidence of community service leadership and demonstrated high commitment to high ideals. As directed by presidential executive order, the 2022 U.S. Presidential Scholars are comprised of one young man and one young woman from each state, the District of Columbia and Puerto Rico, and U.S. families living abroad, as well as 15 chosen-at-large, 20 scholars in the art, and 20 scholars in career and technology education. Created in 1964, the U.S. Presidential Scholars Program has honored over 7,900 of the nation's top-performing students. The program was expanded in 1979 to recognize students who demonstrated exceptional talent in the visual, literary, and performing arts. In 2015, the program was again extended to recognize students who demonstrate ability and accomplishments in CTE fields. So, Kavia, this is a huge honor, and congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Willing to introduce your parents and also share with us what your plans are for next year as well?
My parents are Raj and Deva. And then next year, I plan to attend MIT to study economics and computer science. And I do want to say before I leave from here, I want to say a huge thank you to, you know, everyone who's supported me, especially all the teachers who've, you know, gone out of their way to guide me. I think, like, throughout elementary, junior high, and high school, I've had some really great teachers. One of them is actually here today. Miss Lammer is my fourth-grade teacher. So thank you to you and all my other teachers, as well as to the school district for providing me, like, a multitude of opportunities. I couldn't have done it without, you know, the teachers and the school. Thank you.
Well, on behalf of this, we're very proud of you and your accomplishments. That's because of your hard work, your dedication, and your passion for learning as well. And parents, thank you for instilling that within her. On behalf of that, we wish you the very best.
Thank you.
Can I just add really quick? So my daughter is lucky enough to be friends with Kavia. And so I've gotten to experience what an exceptional young lady you are. So I just wanted to give a personal congratulations to you.
Thank you all very much.
We look forward to watch you over the next few years. Best of luck to you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Final recognition is no stranger to this board. This year, Pleasant Valley's Kenny Wheeler was the 2022 recipient of the Iowa Girls High School Athletic Union Track and Field Golden Plaque Award. Pleasant Valley's Kenny Wheeler is the 2022 Track and Field recipient of the Iowa Girls Athletic Union's Golden Plaque of Distinction Award. Kenny was presented his award on Saturday, May 21st, at the Iowa State Track and Field meet in Drake Stadium. The IGHSAU Golden Plaque of Distinction Award honors the Iowa coach who has demonstrated a successful career while making notable contributions towards school, community, and the coaching profession. Coach Wheeler has coached at Pleasant Valley since 2008. During his tenure, Spartans have won 11 of the last 13 Mississippi Athletic Conference and state qualifying meet championships. Coach Wheeler has guided the Spartans to eight individual and relay school records, and under his guidance, the Spartans have produced 19 individual or relay state champions, nine Drake relays champion. Pleasant Valley has had three Class 4A runner-up finishes with one state championship in 2015. Coach Wheeler has been selected to the ITAC Class 4A Coach of the Year three times, selected as the All-Iowa Track Coach of the Year by the Des Moines Register in 2016, and chosen as the National Federation High School Track and Field Outdoor Coach of the Year in 2020. In 2015, Coach Wheeler and his wife Jane were named by the U.S. Track and Field and cross-country associations as Coaches of the Year. Coach Wheeler coaches with his wife, and Pleasant Valley Girls Cross-Country Coach Jane, and they have daughters Mia, Brooklyn, and Skye. And is currently doing their own award ceremony even as we speak right now. That's why he was not able to be here. Again, congratulations, Coach Wheeler.
Thank you. Drew.
Yes, thank you. Today, we want to take a moment to celebrate. The month of May is the School Board Recognition and Appreciation Month for all our school board members and for all that they do throughout the year for us. Our district, we are celebrating the work of U.S. School Board members who are launching Iowa's next generation through their commitment to students, our schools, and our community. You know, while you look at our school board members, they are elected by the community. They serve as unpaid innovators who help our students take flight by devoting their time to monthly meetings, reviewing board materials, communicating with citizens, exploring learning opportunities, and attending school functions and activities. And again, all on their own time. I personally want to say thank you to all of you for what you've done for us and our district over the last few years and the guidance you've provided through this time. I could not thank you enough for that. And on behalf of all the students of our district, thanks for the decisions you make every single day. And with that, we have a small token appreciation for your service to the district, so it stays underneath the $2 limit law for all of you. But school board members, first of all, Christine Anderson. Brendan Ears. Jody Hoskins. Doug Candywisher. Catherine Kunkel. Molly Brockman.
Thank you.
I also want to take a moment to say thank you to Pleasant View PTA for sponsoring and providing lunch for our board members this evening before our meeting. So as Lisa Lammer said, on behalf of the teachers and everybody in the district and all of our parents' community, thank you for what you do every single day. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, we will be moving on to the business portion of our meeting. So for those of you that want to stay, you're more than welcome. But if you are wanting to leave at this time, if you'd like to do that, again, appreciate you all, and congratulations. All right, are there any questions on this evening's consent agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
I move the board to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Ears, second by Mrs. Anderson to approve this evening's consent agenda as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we'll move on to approval of bills. General fund?
I move that the general fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $536,196.78 in payment of invoices presented.
Okay.
Motion by Mrs. Anderson, second by Mr. Ears, that the general fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $536,196.78 in payment of invoices presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nutrition fund?
I move that nutrition fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $60,855.80 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ears. Are there any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on. All right, moving on to old business. 2022-23 enrollment update, Mr. Struse.
So what I just want to give the board an update is where we are.
Thanks for that update and thank you for all your hard work. Keeping track of these numbers, Mrs. Anderson. Um, moving on to new business. The Bridgeview Elementary School North Parking Lot Replacement Bids.
So tonight, we have Leland is here in the audience as well, so you can ask questions. You can ask Mike Klinge Smith, too. Last Thursday, we had our opening bids for the Bridgeview Parking Lot, which is the north side of the school. We had three companies that came in and gave us bids. Miller Trucking and Excavating, Hawkeye Paving, and then Getz Concrete and Construction. When we had this originally, our estimated cost when Bob Cherkowski was here last time, he thought the estimate was going to be right around $225, basically $226,000. You saw in your supporting documents, the three bids came back at basically $160, or it was $159,870, $159,290. So only $580 difference is all that they were. And then Getz Concrete and Construction came back at $119,800. So they were our low bid. When looking at it from our estimate, it was $106,000 less than our estimate. So that was very good news for us. So tonight, we're talking about looking at taking Getz Concrete and Construction as the low bid for that project. Timeline, Leland, do you have an anticipation?
We have some timeline, but we're hoping for early June.
So the plan was for this project plus Pleasant View to start basically as soon as school is out. The other projects, we'll start right away when school's out. The junior high baseball field, we have some renovations that are taking place there, too, this summer. So, Mike, Leland, other points you'd like to make?
It was good news, obviously.
It was good news, obviously.
It's a little strange for somebody to come in forty thousand dollars below. He even had, he's like, boy, we left a lot of money on the table, but they weren't concerned about it, so. You know, they didn't say we made a mistake or anything, so they accepted the number, so there's no issues there.
So there's no real insight into why there was like a thirty percent difference between them and everybody else?
You'll probably never know.
Has it put us up for the potential of them underestimating and then us having, well, we had to do this extra ten thousand dollar whatever?
You know, Leclerc is known for sinkholes, so I just wanted to.
They are too.
Well, no.
And that's really, that's, that's where a lot of this is. We haven't met with them privately afterwards to say, okay, because that's really where it's all at, all that ground is sinking. And you actually go back in time, as I said, where the water tower was. We don't know if the water tower has something to do with it. Parking lot just, everything underneath it just gave out. But they weren't concerned about it. And the project's pretty clean, it's pretty clean and clear cut, so it'd be hard to come back and say, we need extra money for this or extra money for that. So we really don't expect anything, and there is one extra that might be part of it, but it's separate from that part of the project. There's a sinkhole in front of the building, the parking lot sinking. So since we're going to be on site with the, we might have to address that at the same time.
That's right, when you turn, turn the corner to head back out, there's a section there, probably about two foot by two foot, three foot by two foot maybe, that it's sunk about three inches or so, so I'm not looking at that.
Has Getz done any work for us in the past? Have they done work for us in the past?
Not that I'm, not that I'm aware of, but they've been around a long time, they're, they're very well established. They're, they're a very reputable company.
Same question I asked of Leland.
Any other questions from the board?
Go into public hearing.
All right, we're going to go into public hearing. Are there any questions regarding the bids for the north parking lot replacement at Bridgeview Elementary? None? We'll go out of public hearing, and I will take a motion for approval.
I move the board approve the low bid from Getz Construction, Getz Concrete Construction Corporation of a hundred and nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars for the Bridgeview Elementary School North Parking Lot Replacement Project.
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hoskins, second by Mr. Ayers, that the board approve the low bid from Getz Concrete Construction Corporation of one hundred and nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars for the Bridgeview Elementary School North Parking Lot Replacement Project. Roll call vote please.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Yes.
Mr. Kenwisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Conkle?
Yes.
If I can add one thing, I did just look it up online in our accounting software, and Getz was the company that did the pool wall, the high school pool wall, um, back in...
Few years ago?
Yeah, two thousand twen- yeah, two thousand twenty. Right, right, mhm.
All right, moving on to the Durham Transportation Agreement for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three.
So just give you an update, um, there's been no doubt that we have struggled this year with busing, as many districts have and where we are. But we have been working at Durham to do a one-year contract agreement for next school year, for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year. They know we are looking at it being a one-year contract. Uh, they know that we will be looking at potentially other providers if things don't turn around or can't find solutions in some different areas. So tonight, we are looking at addendum number eight to our original contract, but some of the key things that we're looking at would be... Um, in terms of buses, this deal would give us thirty-two buses plus about fifteen percent extra. So another, another seven buses on top of that would just be in our lot for different reasons. If one breaks down or something happens, you have another bus there. Six of those would be whether transit or conventional buses, and the other one would be a handicap accessible bus in that contract, which is pretty comparable, we've had in the past. So like the biggest thing we're walking away from is by adding the increase in our prices, commercials, can we find more bus drivers? That is our ultimate goal. We'll continue to meet with them in the first part of June, kind of see where they are. Right now, it is a six to eight week window when someone says they want to be a bus driver. It takes about that long to get certified, depending upon what your background is and what your current certification. So our window is not real huge here to get new drivers by the start of the school year. But keep trying. Leland and Michael, anything you'd want to add?
See, I think everybody realizes that the whole bus, busing across the whole state has been very, very difficult. We're just, I guess the only good news is they've, they've seen an uptick in people applying over in Davenport. And we've been waiting for negotiations to get over so we could advertise the newer higher wages, trying to get that same influx of downloads, you know? And hopefully we can pass that this year, because it's been, it's been a challenge for everybody, parents, everyone. And I gotta, I gotta admit, the PD parents have been very patient, and really they should be thanked.
I think the same thing.
Are there other bus companies in our area, so do we have an option outside of Durham?
So the ones that we are familiar with, we first student, who we've been in contact with, they were our provider prior to Durham. Uh, Iowa City just picked up a new one, North, do you remember what it's called, Leland? It starts with an N.
Is it North Cedar?
Might be.
It's small.
So there, that's a new one there, uh, and we'll just keep researching what's out there and what's available. But you have to look at probably about an eight-month window, I mean, just to get them on board early November so they can start planning for the takeover of the following school year. Typically, you might see them come in, they buy the fleet, you're totally, your drivers who are current with that company will go to the next company, but there's still just a lot of things that, in that turnover that has to take place.
So if we, so since Durham's only going to be on a contract for next year, we would have to decide by, start talking in October?
Yeah.
Or earlier, if we're thinking of switching?
Yeah.
That's really not that much time to see if things are improving, unfortunately.
And we can start talking to other companies and see what it looks like, it doesn't mean we have to go with them. So just kind of seeing what our options are. But I would say, October, November, did we get hit pretty hard?
Yeah, we'll, we'll know by then how it's going. You'll know by the first week of school, to be honest. Our other issue is they might not be able to get the buses. So let's say it's first to, let's say they need thirty-nine buses that we have. It's taken them sometimes a year and a half to get buses right now. So it, it's the same thing with cars, buses are the same one, they can't get them.
Are we at risk that Durham says, if you're only going to give us a year, we'll go to Iowa's, or some other district, we'll pull our people and put everything into Davenport or North Scott or?
Good. That's why we try to maintain the best relationship we can. I, overall, I think we've had a very good partnership. Uh, we talk to our bus drivers quite often. Try to thank them for what they're doing, and we meet weekly with Durham every Tuesday, just to say where are we at, what can we do, how are we working together? We will be meeting with them again, uh, in August before school year starts. Leland, myself, and Deanne Kramer will sit down with all the bus drivers, just promote what we can do.
When we have in our contract that the buses can't be over twelve years old, are there actually districts that say we don't want the buses over six years old? Does that like increase the price a lot, or in, I mean, I would just be curious like how much those districts that want the newer buses, how much they run into our buses breaking down, and, you know, I know we've had it. I, I guess I don't, I can't even say we have a lot of that, I only know how much it affected my kids, you know what I mean? But I would just be curious what that looks like. I'm sure it's worth the money.
We have this conversation, for the most part, it's spoken into three groups, tenures, twelve, fourteen. Most of ours were fourteen, but that's a very small percentage of the people that do that, it's only like five percent. About eighty-five percent were at the twelve-year limit, and the other were at the ten.
I guess I don't think ten and twelve is really that big of a difference, but maybe it is in the lifespan of a bus?
We've noticed it's a huge difference between twelve and fourteen, that's why they really start rusting out and really things start failing fast.
And rust is probably the most, it just takes forever, because they got to put or take it out, a commission, and we'll get it fixed, and just replacing rust, that panel, whatever it is, just takes time. So it's nice bringing back down twelve.
I think the bus tracker will be a nice touch, because I know we had problems with communication at some times too, so that will be nice. Everybody wants the instant access to everything, so that will be a nice, nice change.
Yes.
So Durham buys the, owns the fleet, and we pay.
You see it going the other way?
So, I mean, I don't know buses, but does that distance influence on getting efficient, really efficient buses? Or maybe alternative fuel buses, or how does that really work in the bus world?
As far as, how do you improve the tool economy of the bus, I guess, for your question?
Yeah, I, I mean, well, I'm just thinking about cities, right? They've got other alternative fuels instead of gas, which is super expensive right now. My question really is, is there anyone sent here for the bus companies, consider these alternative types of engines and effect? Because we pay the bill on the fuel side, so they never see it, right?
Yeah. I think you're starting to see, again, with the bus fleet takes so long to get those, I think you're starting to see private, not just privately, but schools that own their own are probably adding a bus here and there, um, just to their fleet, when they get a new one, they might get an electric one, or they might get, uh, LP is the other one, yes. But not a full swapping of your fleet.
I think, like Doug, are you thinking like with everything else going electric, that there, there's a...
I am thinking about balance sheet perspective, right? If we're paying all the fuel costs, and the fuel costs are crazy right now, sure would be nice if at least one or two of the buses wasn't that, and we could use the heck out of it, but I'm also thinking of it, you know, just from an environmental perspective.
I would, I would guess in like the next five years, that's going to be the big push, that's gradual, bring them in, just like Metro has a couple of electric buses and more and more efficiencies. We might be slower having that twelve-year limit where XYZ district has a six-year, they might see, I'm going to call them modernizations, before we would with a time limit of the twelve years. But they're coming, I mean, I, I would think on both sides, that that's something to keep in mind.
It gets back to that though, because we don't have the, if you look at a lot of the utilities that we have, and we actually, the fuel tanks are actually on our grounds, we actually, we buy and store the fuel. So we've got twenty-five thousand gallons of diesel. We don't have that kind of capacity for gas, because the only gas they won't use for the white fleet, which is the suburban, they invest in all the transit pants and stuff like that. So we would have to go and prove that if we're going to, a lot of buses are switching back over to gas, because we're trying to get away from the deaf and all the pollution controls of the diesels. But then we'd have to increase our, our fuel farm, our tanks and all that stuff. The same thing with electrical, you'd have to put in electrical charging stations for thirty-man buses.
Okay, thanks, Leland.
And just as Google, our article says a bus, an electric school bus is three hundred, fleet, it's like a hundred and forty thousand dollars difference between a diesel bus. I think we'll get there. It's probably just not going to be in my lifetime.
Just to remind you.
And I'm planning to live to be a hundred.
One of our options is, we don't have to go with a private company either. One of our options is, we take the fleet back over ourselves, if we believe we can purchase the buses and we can manage it and, and do all of that. That is an option, and we used to do that a number of years ago before we switched over to public, air privatization. So we'll explore that too and see what that cost would be.
Are there any other questions? If not, I'll take a motion.
I move the board accept the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three transportation agreement between Pleasant Valley Community School District and Durham School Services as presented.
Second? All right, motion by Mrs. Conkle, second by Mrs. Hoskins, that the board accept the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three transportation agreement between Pleasant Valley Community School District and Durham School Services as presented. Roll call vote please, Mrs. Seaman.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Yes.
Mr. Kenwisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Conkle? Yes.
Mr. Kenwisher, April, month eight hundred, for one twenty-two.
Yeah, and looking at the April monthly financials, um, again, nothing really stood out to me as being unusual, everything.
I move the board accept the monthly financial report for April twenty twenty-two as presented.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Mr. Kenwisher, that the board accept the monthly financial reports for April twenty twenty-two as presented. Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Ayers?
Yes.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hoskins?
Yes.
Kenwisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Conkle?
Yes.
All right, um, future dates, uh, we've got one board meeting in June and, no, we've got two board meetings in June. Uh, Monday, the thirteenth, and Monday, the twenty-seventh, both at six P M. And anything else? We've got graduation coming up this weekend.
No, he was going to. Okay, perfect, thank you.
All right, if there's nothing else, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Brock.